The Monday, August 2nd regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Boudreaux?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Derna Lawitz?
Present.
Counsel Graves? Counsel Harder?
Present.
Counsel Matt?
Present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
President Kaczynski?
Present.
Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say with blessed allegiance. Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the same with the good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to show thy love and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording tonight's meeting? We'll begin with the reading and approval of the June, I'm sorry, June 7th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Madam President, I make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh, to waive the reading of the minutes of the meetings and accept them as presented. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Appointments by the mayor. Item number 10485, a measure confirming the mayor's appointments of election officers for the 2021 and 202022. Report from the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam President, these are the mayor's appointments of election officers for the various precincts and wards in the city. These are done on a periodic basis to cover the various polling places that we have for the upcoming elections in the fall. Finance Committee is favorable, I move the appointment, move confirmation of the appointments.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier to confirm the mayor's appointments. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10486, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Kenneth Arsenault to the position of License Commission for term expiring July 12th, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Yes, if I may, Madam President, the Finance Committee considered the disappointment from the mayor. This is a reappointment of Mr. Arsenault to the position of member of the License Commission, and the mayor enthusiastically supported his position. He's done a good job for the commission, and these, there are a number of reappointments in this, on our agenda tonight. The Finance Committee is favorable to all of them. I'm not going to list his questions. I'm not going to go into any great length on any of them, just so we can move along, but happy to answer your questions on a particular appointment it might be. But with respect to Mr. Arsenault, I move that we confirm the appointment.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Boone to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10487, a measure confirming the appointments, the mayor's appointment of Alexandria Lattaroot to the position of Police Officer of Gardner Police Department, permanent. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee is favorable on this. She has a candidate for a permanent appointment. She has recommended her highly. She graduated from the academy, and on a personal note, my wife and I both had the opportunity and the pleasure of having her as a student when we were principals at the school she attended. I think this is a first for me in all my years, to be able to do that, and I'm delighted to offer the motion to confirm her appointment.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to confirm the appointment. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10488, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Kristen Stellerno to the position of Senior Animal Control Officer for term expiring July 21st, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, this is a reappointment. Finance Committee is favorable, I move the confirmation of the appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to confirm the appointment. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10489, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Cheryl Slack to the position of Animal Control Officer for term expiring July 21st, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable again. This is a reappointment, and I move the confirmation.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10490, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Alana Merzerv to the position of Animal Control Officer for term expiring July 12th, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable on this, and again, this is a reappointment. All of these candidates come highly recommended by the respective supervisors, and I move the confirmation.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10491, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Carla J. Wajikawicz to the position of Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund Member for term expiring July 12th, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Report from the Finance Committee is favorable. Ms. Wajikawicz is a new member, would be a new member of the Gift Fund Trustee Group. She brings the perspective of a retired elementary school teacher, which is welcome on the trustees, which I've served since the beginning, so I'm happy to recommend and move that we confirm her appointment.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Derna Lawitz to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10492, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Rice Esquire to the position of Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund Trustee for term expiring July 21st, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable. This is a reappointment. Mr. Rice has served in the position for a while. He's also a former librarian and school librarian here in the community. Brings a font of knowledge and experience to the position, and I make a motion that we confirm the appointment. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Boone to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, based upon a professional relationship I have with Attorney Rice. Recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Walsh will recuse himself. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10493, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Trevor Birigard to the position of Director of Community Development and Planning for term expiring July 17th, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
This is a reappointment of Mr. Birigard to the position that he's held for a number of years, and has been in the department for a number, and a significant additional number of years beyond that. Finance Committee is favorable, and I move confirmation of the appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Cormier to confirm the appointment. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Is it three? All those, no, please raise your right hand again, I'm sorry. Yeah. One, two, three. Four noes, six yeses, the motion passes. Item 10494, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Ronald Cormier to the position of Redevelopment Authority Member for term expiring July 21st, 2026. Report from the Finance Committee?
Motion, the Finance Committee is favorable to the appointment, and I move confirmation.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Derna Lawitz to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion? Counsel Ron Cormier?
Excuse myself from voting on this.
Counsel Ron Cormier is recusing himself. Further discussion?
I'll excuse myself from this vote.
Counsel Craig Cormier is recusing himself. All those in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10495, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Greg Dumis to the position of Conservation Commission Member for term expiring July 21st, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable, goes to serve as the chairman, long-term member of the commission, and obviously a reappointment, and I move the confirmation.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to confirm the appointment. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10496, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Michael Hermanson to the position of Conservation Commission Member for term expiring July 21st, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Report is favorable, the, this is a reappointment of Mr. Hermanson to the position, commission. The mayor was enthusiastic in his support, I move confirmation of the appointment.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Boone to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10497, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Neil Jansons to the position of Industrial Development Finance Authority Member for term expiring September 10th, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable, I move confirmation of the order, of the appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10498, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of M. Paul Carlberg to the position of Industrial Development Finance Authority Member for term expiring June 26th, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable, I move confirmation of the appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10499, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Timothy Horgan to the position of Industrial Development Finance Authority Member for term expiring October 5th, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, the report is favorable, I move confirmation of the appointment.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10500, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Paul Tison to the position of Industrial Development Finance Authority Member for term expiring May 5th, 2024. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, the report is favorable, but I move confirmation of the appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10501, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Ronald Cormier to the position of Industrial Development Finance Authority Member for term expiring June 21st, 2026. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, the report is favorable, and I move confirmation of the appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Derna Lawitz to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I ask to be excused.
Counsel Ron Cormier is accusing himself?
Also has to be excused.
Counsel Craig Cormier is also accusing himself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10502, a notification of resignation of Irene Dobzinski from the Gardner Housing Authority Board. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable, we make a motion, place this letter of resignation on file, and we ask that the clerk be instructed to send a letter of congratulations and thank you to Mrs. Dobzinski for her years of service.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to place the notification on file and send a letter from the city clerk's office on our behalf to Mrs. Dobzinski, thanking her for her years of service and congratulating her. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10506, a notification of fire department appointment. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was very happy to receive this information. As you're all aware, the fire chief is the sole reporting authority of all the members of the fire department, and in the past, we've not always been, through no fault of anyone, made aware of appointments and so on, so this is a nice gesture he's doing, and we know it will continue in the future whenever appointments are made, so that we can become aware of this. So I make a motion that we congratulate these new members, and also place this document on file.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to place the notification on file and say congratulations to those members. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting, and we will swear in those who've been appointed here this evening, and we will reconvene after the swearing-in is completed, and at that time, call the meeting back to order.
Back to order. The next item on the agenda is executive session. Counselor Generalitz?
I make a motion, we move into executive session.
Second motion.
Motion made by Counselor Generalitz. Motion made by Counselor Generalitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to move into executive session. Under section three of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, which states that "A public body may enter to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares, as stated in section 21a3 of chapter thirty-eight of the general laws, the purpose of which being to discuss Esgraves versus City of Gardner and other parties filed in the Massachusetts Superior Court." Again, motion made by Counselor Generalitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros. As required by chapter thirty-eight of the general laws, I declare that discussing these matters in open session would not be appropriate as the discussion involves an item in active litigation against the city. Is there any discussion on the motion? The clerk, this requires a roll call vote, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Generalitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes.
Motion passes. The city council will now meet in executive session. A brief recess will be called as the members of the public and those with a vested interest against the city's standing in the litigation at hand exit the council chamber. The doors will be shut and the public broadcast of the meeting will pause. Following the city council voting to close the executive session and re-enter into open session, the doors will be reopened, the public admitted back into the chamber, and the public broadcast resumed. The mayor and city solicitor will be allowed to remain in the council chamber for the discussion. And I'm going to now recess the meeting so that the people had cited who can leave. We are now back in open session and we are going to continue with communications from the mayor. Orders, item number one zero five one zero, an order transferring eighty-one thousand seventy-five dollars from mayor's unclassified termination leave account, mayor's unclassified Esgraves versus At All lawsuit account. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Make a motion that we pass the money order as requested.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to pass the money order as requested. Any discussion? Counselor Walsh?
Motion that I move that we reduce the amount requested to two fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
So the amendment to the motion is to change the amount from eighty-one thousand seventy-five dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Boone. Is there discussion? The clerk will call the roll. I'm sorry. This does require a roll call vote, and it is six votes, just to be clear.
On the amendment?
Amendment.
I'm sorry. No, on the item, that's what it requires. On the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So the order is, now there's a motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, an order transferring fifteen thousand dollars from mayor's unclassified termination leave account, mayor's unclassified Esgraves versus At All lawsuit account. Is there discussion? Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't believe a lawsuit filed by Counselor Scott J. Graves that could have large financial ramifications for the city is being done with the city's best interest in mind. Here we have a money order before us to defend this action. There is no secret of the personal disdain the plaintiff Counselor Graves has for the city's solicitor and the city's legal department. Often his views are valid but are lost in his continuing animosity and insults against the city's solicitor. However, this legal action I feel is going too far. This is to no one's benefit other than the plaintiff. What does, one does not need to be a practicing attorney to know that the information regarding pending litigation isn't public knowledge. The Secretary of State agreed with the ruling of the city's solicitor that a public records request by Counselor Graves would jeopardize the legal position of the city in a pending lawsuit filed in two thousand seventeen against the City of Gardner. The public records request law obviously does have some limitations. Instead, this council is put in the position to spend what could be an exorbitant amount of money by one who claims to be the financial overseer of the taxpayers' money, yet this proves otherwise. The complaint continues to state his responsibility to investigate all matters and issues that come before him affecting the citizenry. He states the city has been in the dark since two thousand ten in regards to the drinking water. The plaintiff, Counselor Graves, has been on the council for sixteen years. This has been a concern, as stated in his complaint number eleven, for eleven years. Ask yourselves, why is this being filed now? He states in number one-ten it's for the health and safety of the citizens. Eleven years later, this legal process could cost the taxpayers up to eighty-one thousand dollars or more for legal fees. Money that could be spent on so many other ways that would benefit the city and its citizens. More lighted pedestrian signs for crosswalks, solar speed limit lines for hot, high, speed limit signs for high-traffic roads, to replace shingles and paint the building at the Greenwood Pool, to hire crossing guards, bus monitors, fund youth recreation programs, remove more trees on the ever-growing list, eliminate user fees if students aren't charged to play sports, redo the high school tennis courts, just to name a few. But here we are tonight, put in a position to allocate the funds to defend our law department. For another perspective, the average city employee doesn't make eighty-one thousand dollars. Another way the funds could be spent better. Let's be clear, this lawsuit is not costing the plaintiff, Counselor Graves, anything, as he represents himself by his legal actions, by his legal actions are costing the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. Everyone needs to be prepared, as this suit could go on, long-term, and cost the city more funds than are being requested this evening. As far as I'm concerned, whether it's fifteen or eighty-one thousand dollars, we might as well just light it on fire in front of City Hall. The taxpayers and the voters should be outraged over this unnecessary financial waste. As this plaintiff states in number forty, he is a public official, competently, carefully, fairly, faithfully, and with due diligence executes the duties of his office, which includes obligations as to protect the citizen's treasury from unwise, unlawful, or wasteful spending. If this isn't wasteful spending, what is? But we have been given no choice as the lawsuit was filed, and outside counsel is needed. I will support this order, but it is with great resentment for being put in this position by another counselor as he is costing the taxpayers unnecessary grief. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Any further discussion? Counselor Boudreaux?
Second. Well, that's a joke, but I am proud of what my colleague to my left has just said and do share many of her same sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boudreaux. Any further discussion? Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I do appreciate Counselor Mack's, I hate having the city have to spend money on, on having to litigate items. But to be honest, this has gone on for a very long time where, and I said before, you ask any plumber, Wheelons, Cherokee Oil, everybody, the coils go early because of Gardner's water. And we never got a good answer as to why that happens or how to fix it. And I've heard some ways of possibly fixing it, but it never happens. So it's cost the taxpayers thousands and thousands of dollars over the years. You probably all along here have had to replace your coils. And I know I certainly had, and so, you know, again, I agree with Counselor Mack that I hate that we have to spend money to litigate, but I wish we had a clear answer as to why that keeps happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Counselor Walsh?
There's nothing in this case that will determine the answer to Counselor Boone's question, which is a legitimate one, but that's what the litigation brought that's been pending for a number of years seeks to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Generalitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Communications, item one zero five zero three, report from the Capital Improvement Plan Committee for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Two, report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is favorable on this. You've all received a copy of it. These are the items that the city, the committee voted on to include in the capital list. Anytime we need to go off bonding, Bond Council always looks to make sure that we've recognized this and review it and update it every year. So I make a motion that we accept this and place it on file.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to place the report on file. Is there discussion? Counselor Boudreaux?
Knowing that capital improvement plans are not easy and they take a lot of time, I would like to thank City Engineer Chris Cofflin, who chairs the Capital Improvement Plan Committee, and Counselor Ron Cormier, who is a member for doing the work and the entire committee as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boudreaux. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one zero five zero four, a measure authorizing the FY Two Thousand Twenty-One Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement Plan, report from the Finance Committee.
Yes, this is a, mini entitlement plan requires approval on an annual basis for the submission of their application for funding. And this is no different from the one, and we have a listing of the items that are involved. The Finance Committee was favorable to recommend authorization, and so I move that we authorize the committee, the Fiscal Twenty Thousand Twenty-One Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement Plan. Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier, to authorize the FY Two Thousand Twenty-One Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement Plan. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one zero five zero five, a report from the mayor regarding paving updates, August Two Thousand Twenty-One, report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee was pleased, I think as all the councils were, to receive a listing of all the paving projects that we've got going. It's most we've, I think it's safe to say the most we've ever seen, plus along with the waterworks projects and so on. I know we're all annoyed with the bad roads as they're happening, and we're also annoyed when a favorite street isn't taken care of immediately. But it's nice of the mayor to keep us up to date, and we're happy to see this, and we encourage him to continue to do so. So I make a motion to replace this on file.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to place the report on file. Is there discussion? The clerk will, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one zero five zero seven, a measure to accept a quitclaim deed and conveyance from American Legion Post One Twenty-Nine. I just want to note that this does require a two-thirds vote, and we will do a roll call vote on this. Report from the Finance Committee?
Report from the Finance Committee is favorable. This is a small portion of land owned by the American Legion Post that is part of the project for reconfiguration of the Rotary up at the Elm Street, Pearl Street, and Central Street areas. And in order for the, the city has already, we inquired of the mayor what the city's obligation to this is financially, the city has already paid its portion of the design for the project, and the rest of it would be, and the execution of the project is funded as part of the tip program that would be probably in Two Thousand Twenty-Two. But in order to, we need to have site control of the land that would be involved, and the American Legion Post has offered to convey the land necessary to do it, that they currently own. So Finance Committee was favorable to accepting the quitclaim deed and conveyance, and I move the acceptance.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier, to accept the quitclaim deed and conveyance from American Legion Post One Twenty-Nine. Is there discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Generalitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ten years, the motion passes. Item one zero five zero eight, a measure designating the Health Department Prevention Coordinator as Special Municipal Employee, report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee had some questions tonight. Make a motion that this be referred to Finance Committee for further study and report.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one zero five zero nine, a measure relative to a disclosure by a special public employee of financial interest in additional legal or professional service contracts with a public agency, report from the Finance Committee?
Report from the Finance Committee is to refer this also to the Finance Committee for study and report. The form that was submitted is from a special public employee. The employee in question is not, there's a separate form for that. We expect the proper form to be before the Finance Committee at our next meeting, and will be substituted for this, so I move that the item be referred to the Finance Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there discussion? The clerk will, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one zero, item one zero five one one, an ordinances, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter One Seventy-One thereof, entitled Personnel, to change the compensation schedule, Exhibit E, report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is still waiting for a little bit more information on this, so respectfully request more time.
On this one?
Oh.
On the compensation schedule?
Oh, wait a minute, I got the wrong one.
I'll take it.
Okay.
This is the compensation schedule amendment that would line up with the appropriations that we made in the annual budget for two-and-a-half percent adjustments to the compensation for people. In response, the mayor indicated that in response to questions that have been raised by counselors since he took office, other things have been broken out so that the format is clear of what the elements are and the various pieces of compensation and the code or statutory references that are associated with those, separate elements, so that's for informational purposes. And it's helpful for people to understand where money is being paid and what is being paid for it and why it's being paid for. But in general, the ordinance amendment reflects the funding that we have provided in the annual budget that we passed a few months ago. So with that, Finance Committee was favorable to sending this to a first printing, and I move that it be sent to a first printer.
Aye.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier, to send the ordinance amendment to first printing. This requires a roll call vote, and it's a two-thirds vote.
For the first printing?
Is there a discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Generalitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ten years, the motion passes. Item one zero five one two, an ordinance to amend Code of City of Gardner, Section Eight of Chapter Three Twelve thereof, entitled Dog Control License Fees, report from the Finance Committee?
All right. Actually, the same report will apply to all three of these. These were all newly received this evening by the Finance Committee.
We recommend first printing on this.
On the, all the fees, I thought we...
First printing on the first one, on the dog...
Oh, the animal's fees, yes.
Just for kennels.
It's been a long evening. The first one is for the dog kennel fees, and that one we were in agreement with, it doesn't apply to regular dog licenses. This is to put us in line with the other communities that we serve. We have a consortium, if you will, that we deal with, and therefore I make a motion that we send this to its first printing.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to send the ordinance amendment to its first printing. Is there a discussion? Counselor Walsh?
I just want to make clear that this doesn't apply to dog license fees for male or female dogs, for neutered spayed dogs, because there are separate fees for that. They do not change by this ordinance amendment. It only applies to kennel fees, and to be in line with, you know, our animal control officers serve more than one community, and they, those communities share in the expense that we pay for the service. And so to be in line with those other communities for kennel fees, and to ensure that we keep track of who's conducting themselves as kennels, this ordinance amendment was recommended, and so I'll vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item one zero five one three, an ordinance to amend the Code of City of Gardner, Section Eight of Chapter Three Ninety thereof, entitled Fire Department Fee Schedule, report from the Finance Committee?
I was a little presumptuous. I jumped ahead of myself a little bit on my last one. Yeah, these two, Five Thirteen and Fourteen, both require a little further study and report by the Finance Committee. They're all new fees and restructuring of the fees for various departments. So I make a motion that this be referred to Finance Committee.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one zero five one four, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter Three Ninety entitled Fees, report from the Finance Committee, and this has to do with building department fees.
I made a motion that this be referred to Finance Committee for study and report.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Walsh?
I just wanted to point out, as I did during the Finance Committee meeting, that on the very day that we pay our real estate taxes for the first quarter of Fiscal Twenty-Two, we're being asked to consider significant increases in fees, when people who are paying their real estate tax bill today are experiencing what in many cases will be fairly significant increases in their real estate tax bills. So I think we need to approach this very cautiously.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor Boudreaux?
Point of, I guess I just have a question. Through the Chair to the Finance Committee.
Sure.
Seeing as this is going to be a important matter that we're all going to want to hear about, is there any, would you guys be against going to Council of the Whole, or do you see a reason to stop by Finance first?
Counselor Walsh?
I think ultimately that may be something to do, but I think we'd need to collect some additional information to be able to report on whether that's a wise thing to do when we have that information.
Received. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item one zero five one five, a measure confirming the city clerk's appointment of Faith Glover to the position of Assistant City Clerk for term expiring July fourteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Four, report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable, I move the confirmation.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to confirm the city clerk's appointment. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one zero five one six, a communication from the Traffic Commission relative to a measure to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C, establishment of twenty-five miles per hour speed limit in thickly settled or business district in city or town. Report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Craig Cormier?
While we hadn't referred, we did have a chance to discuss this at this morning's meeting. This is an item that comes from the deputy chief. It would give the local department additional tools to develop twenty-five mile per hour speed limits in certain areas of the city. I know one of the thoughts was in regards to the realignment of the Pleasant Street intersection with the bridge now open. So really, all this does is it gives the city more tools to be able to keep the city traffic in a safe speed and to enforce that. We voted and we recommend unanimously to the council to approve this matter. So I move that the council approve this communication.
Second.
Send it to its first printing?
Yes.
No, it's, I think this is, if I may, point of order. The matter before us is to adopt or to accept a provision of Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C. And to be honest with you, I anticipated that this was going to be referred to the Safety Committee, so I didn't look at it as... Committee, so I didn't look at it as carefully as I might have. So I'd like some more time, and I move that we be referred to the Safety Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by, so motion made by.
The motion refers a priority.
So motion referred, I'm sorry, so motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier, to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 10517, a communication from the Traffic Commission relative to an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, Section 54, thereof, entitled obedience to isolated stop signs, report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Craig Cormier?
I'll move to refer this to the Public Safety Committee for study and report.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee, item 10469, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 171 thereof, entitled personnel, by amending Section 14, holidays designated Section 44, compensation in lieu of paid holidays, and Section 60, holidays with pay, report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee would respectfully request more time on this one.
The committee will be granted more time if there is no objection. Committee will be granted more time. Public Safety Committee, item 10471, a communication from the Traffic Commission relative to an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, Section 24, thereof, entitled parking prohibited on certain streets, report from the Public Safety Committee?
We discussed this this morning. Counselor Tyros is interested in getting more input from the people affected by this, and so he's going to add an item to the next agenda to hopefully get the council to send letters to get feedback from the residents affected by this, and so we therefore ask for more time.
The committee will be granted more time if there is no objection. Granted more time. Item 14074, an application by AutoMart, 182 West Street, for a license to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles, Class II, report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Craig Cormier?
We discussed this this morning with the chief and the city clerk. This business is in good standing, and we move the application for approval.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to approve the application. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I would like to call Counselor Ron Cormier to take number 10478. I will recuse myself and step away from the matter because I have a potential conflict.
You have before you 10478, an application by Gardner, 10 pins, Incorporated 560 West Broadway, for a bowling alley license, report from the Safety Committee?
We met on this item this morning with the chief of police and city clerk, and this is a reapplication. This business is in good standing, and we unanimously move to approve the application.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder, to approve the application. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those, with Counselor Kaczynski standing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
No.
The motion carries.
No, I didn't mean that. I can't vote both ways.
Committee of the whole, item 10484, a measure authorizing a solar energy pilot agreement with BCC Solar Energy Advantage. We had an informal meeting earlier this evening on this matter. Is there a motion? Counselor.
I make a motion that this be referred to the Finance Committee. There were some questions that were raised, and we'd like to resolve those.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to refer the item to the Finance Committee. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item number 10426, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675, Section 530, entitled Development Overlay, District 1, to add a subsection H. This matter would require a two-thirds majority vote, so that would be eight votes, and it would be a roll call vote. Is there, Counselor Donald Lowitz?
Make a motion, we postpone this vote till the next meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Donald Lowitz, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier, to postpone the vote to our next meeting. Is there discussion? Counselor Donald Lowitz?
This ordinance amendment is counsel raised, who's not here, his idea, so I just feel it's fair that you'd be here to discuss it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Postpone it, it doesn't require.
Oh, we're postponing it, okay. I'm sorry. So we'll postpone that to the next meeting. Moving into new business. Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President. As a oversight, there was no discussion allowed by the president on the vote to approve Mr. Beauregard's appointment, so I wanted to take a moment to discuss my vote for his position as Director of Community Development and Planning. My vote of dissent, and this is probably one of the toughest decisions I've had to make since I've been on the council, was due to the fact that many such as myself have not seen the benefit, the city benefiting under his leadership in the past few years. However, I have to say tonight during the Finance Committee, I was very pleased to hear some of the mayor's report of current projects that are going on, and I hope to continue to hear about them in the future. As Mr. Beauregard did not allow those of us who voted in opposition of his appointment to congratulate him, I would like to publicly offer him my congratulations. I hope that we can all continue to work in a professional manner, as, you know, sometimes we don't always agree, we don't always vote in the same manner, but whether you're an elected official or a non-elected employee of the City of Gardner, I feel that we all need to work together in what's in the best interest of the city moving forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bujo?
One less handshake. So with me not really being, by that oversight, not being given the opportunity to really say why I voted no for Department Head this evening, the first one, I didn't like doing it, I don't feel good, I believe that people's livelihood is incredibly important, I just have not seen a ton come out of community development and planning that would not have happened without them come in the last couple of years. A letter came last night, I believe, probably to everybody from a Mr. Hart show, and I can report it to the, for the record, if it had not, but he went through a lot of what the director could have been doing and hadn't been doing, looking at other communities and seeing them promoting, seeing them go after business opportunities countrywide, seeing them just doing a variety of things that are not happening here in the City of Gardner. And I hope that tonight with four no votes, but the director's still maintaining his position, that this is the opportunity for him to make some changes that hopefully in three years it'll be eleven, you know. Other than that, there will be a Dog Park, Friends of the Dog Park Vendor Fair on August 21st, and we are beginning the Second Mayor of the Dog Park Facebook Competition tomorrow. You will all be getting an email about that, so that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bujo. Counselor Harden?
Yes, I too voted no on the appointment of Trevor, and I could not say it any better than what Counselor Mack had spoken about tonight. I, and as well as Counselor Bujo, I feel bad. You just hate to do that, you know. I hope that with those four no votes, that he will maybe try a little more. I don't do his job, so I can't say what he does and what he doesn't do, but I just wanted to put a no vote out there for many reasons, and I do wish him the best, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harden. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, I'd like to just recognize Lieutenant Robert Jiggs, who recently retired from the Fire Department after serving as an officer from 1995 until 2021, and a dispatcher from 1991 to 2000, I believe. I'd like to make a motion that the city clerks send a letter on behalf of the city council to thank him for his service and commend him on his retirement.
Counselor Mack?
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Donald Lowitz, to send a note of congratulations. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tyros?
Nothing in this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Donald Lowitz?
Nothing in this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I too did not vote for Trevor, and again, as my fellow counselors pointed out, we probably don't know the job well enough, but it just seems that the city's not moving forward, and, but I'm hoping that certainly, as they have pointed out eloquently, that we'll still work together and hopefully move the City of Gardner, you know, forward, and I appreciate that.